Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh, good, look at that. We have all eight of us here. So at 7:02, I'd like to call the September 14th meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Betts?
Here.
Eight, zero, there's a quorum of council.
Thank you very much. Next item for business is a meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anyone that folks would like us to keep in our thoughts this evening as we reflect? Mr. Jackson, Brian Jackson?
Thank you. A young man by the name of Andrew Allen passed away. He was a Cooley student who worked at night as a security guard just so he could go to law school, and he was just finishing up, and he passed away in his home state of Georgia. He wasn't a Lansing person, but he was an adopted son, and I know he's gonna be missed, and just put his family and friends in our prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Many of us know Kurt Hewitt. Kurt is in the Second Ward and was president of the Old Everett Neighborhood for a number of years. He lost his mother over the weekend, and if we could remember Kurt in our prayers, it was, she'd been suffering for some time, but it's still a blow to him, and if we could remember him, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Wood. Seeing no further hands, I ask that you all please join me in a moment of meditation.
President Spatafor, I see the mayor has his hand waving.
You're not special. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Apologize.
I never, I appreciate that.
I'd already nodded out, I'm sorry.
I would like to recognize that last Wednesday was the 50-year anniversary of the tragic death of Dennis Rodeman, one of our firefighters. LFD laid some reeds, I was able to join them, but I want to recognize that as a tragedy that I think we all remember all too well. Also, we should probably recognize that 9/11 just passed last Friday, and we should recognize all of those who perished, who rushed into buildings, who survived, and the trials that they have gone through and go through, so we can keep all of those folks, the family of Dennis Rodeman and all of our LFD family, as well as everyone involved in 9/11. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that is it from the council, or from everyone, rather, excuse me. Please join me in a moment of meditation. Thank you. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the print proceedings of August 31st.
Mr. Vice President?
Sure, I would move the print accounts proceedings of August 31st.
Minutes have been moved, is there, the proceedings have been moved, rather, are there any questions or comments from the city council? Seeing none, all those in favor, Mr., Sherri, would you please call the roll, or Mr. Clerk, please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Eight, A, zero, Ns, the proceedings are adopted, and we are to comments by councilmembers on the city clerk.
Any comments from councilmembers today? Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone who participated in this past Saturday's South Lansing constituent contact meeting hosted by Councilman Garza and myself. We had some technical difficulties. We had to, at the last minute, create a new link. It would not have been possible if it wasn't for our very own tech guru, Mr. Spatafor, and we got that link out to as many folks as we could at about 9:54, and believe it or not, by about 10 o'clock, we had 30 folks that were part of that meeting. And so, again, sincerely apologize if you did not get the new link, and if you were not able to join, but for those folks that were able to participate, we did have just a, you know, incredible discussion, I think lots of great information shared. I have to, you know, give a special thank you to Commissioner Dorell Slaughter, who was there to talk about county issues. We had Neighbor Advisory Board member Tracy Winston, as well as Delisa Fontaine from the Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement Department, they were there to talk about neighborhood grant information coming up. We also had a number of individuals from boards and commissions. We had Samar Morgan, Nancy Malo, and Jason Wilks from the Public Service Board. We also had Patty Farhat from the Police Commission. They were there to, you know, provide updates from their respective commissions and appointments. We also had Judge Ward that was present, and, you know, she was there to engage and to listen and to learn, but she also gave us a number of updates regarding 54A District Court, which we appreciated, and we really appreciated as well, Councilman Wood, for stopping in and joining in the discussion. So again, really appreciate those folks that were able to carve out a little bit of time as part of their Saturday morning to join us. In addition to that, President Spatafor, over the past few weeks, rejuvenating South Lansing, as well as the Southwest Action Group, have been working to, you know, beautify the traffic circles and the traffic islands over on Mary Avenue. They have cleaned out trash from those areas of structures. They've laid garden fabric and planted perennials and put down mulch, and really, the impact has been pretty tremendous. That said, there are a few traffic circles and islands that remain, and my understanding is they want to continue that work on September 26th at 10:00 a.m., and they are, at this point, asking folks in the community to attend if they have a little bit of time to spare. Again, that is September 26th at 10:00 a.m. Garden tools, flowers, mulch, garden fabric, those things are provided. They're simply asking that if you would like to join, you bring work gloves and masks. They will be meeting at 10:00 a.m. at the Traffic Circle at Mary Avenue and Christiansen Street, so if you're interested. And then the next day, it's kind of a weekend of service, the next day on September 27th at 10:00 a.m., Councilman Garza, myself, as well as Violet Polzin, who is the office manager over at 900 West Townhomes, we are leading an Edgewood Boulevard community cleanup. This is something that we have done over the past several years. We typically do it in the spring, obviously due to COVID, we, you know, had to kind of cease, we had actually been planning, along with Pastor Brad over at the South Church of Nazarene, but we had to, you know, kind of halt that project because of COVID. What we are going to do is kind of engage in a socially-distanced cleanup. We'll be meeting at 10:00 a.m., again, September 27th, on the patio at the 900 West Townhomes Leasing Office. We will provide vests, we will provide bags, we simply ask that you bring gloves and masks. We will be serving donuts and coffee prior to working, and the hope is that we can clean all the way from South MLK to Cedar. So again, that's Sunday, September 27th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Just, I'm going to be having two meetings this week, two constituency meetings, one Wednesday evening and one Saturday morning to discuss the budget priorities that are coming up, and we're going to be voting on on the 21st. I want to make sure that I have some input from my ward and from honestly anybody in the city, so if you'd like to stop in either of those, shoot me an email, I'll also be posting the events on Facebook, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I just wanted to announce that Grace Lutheran Church is going to have an event registered to vote in their parking lot at the corner of Martin Luther King and LaPierre Street on October 3rd from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. The event will be a drive-through with COVID precautions. You need to bring a driver's license or a Michigan ID as part of the registration, and I'll be announcing this on the 21st as well, and again, this will be October 3rd.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Wood. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President Spatafor.
Oh, wait, Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, I have one. So, during the whole, my apologies, I forgot. It was asked, requested that council do some sort of input listening session with the neighbors affected by the Montgomery Drain District. I will be doing that. I've asked for the folks that live over there to reach out to me to try and schedule something. If that doesn't happen by the end of this week, I'll make sure to do it myself next week, track someone down. I've got the list of who lives there, we'll figure out someone to help organize it, but we'll do that, and I'll invite the ward rep, Councilmember Betts. Yes, and also, Mr. Kilpatrick has agreed to attend if his schedule permits, so we'll just do that and walk through the methodology, talk about the assessment, those types of things, in addition to the public hearing, which is going to be set this evening for October 12th, but just want to make that clear. We will do that, try to respect everyone's health and safety, and we'll do it outdoors, mask, et cetera, et cetera, but we will try to do it in a way that is not Zoom. So, there we go. Sorry about that, Mr. Clerk, are you?
Okay, thank you. I do just want to announce that we are preparing to send out the absentee voter ballots, the first big wave, which is looking to be at least 26,000 strong, will go out on September 24th. We, there is still lots of time to request a ballot, you can do that. Every voter who has not already requested a ballot should have received an application in the mail at their home. People who aren't registered can register if they have a Michigan driver's license or ID online at michigan.gov/vote, and they can also request an absentee ballot there. So we'll have more information forthcoming and some exciting news, a little bit of it may be discussed at the council meeting tonight regarding a grant that is helping fund some of the things that we're doing, but in terms of current updates, those who have requested a ballot, you should expect to get it in the end of September. And if you believe you requested one and don't get it by October 1st, please contact my office, because either there's an issue with mail, or we don't have a request that we thought you had, or some other issues that we can look into, but the earlier you contact us if there's an issue, the easier we can deal with it. With that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the, a member of the public has a community event announcement, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the time, place, and purpose of your event. Raise your hand, and I do see some hands raised. Chris Umlad, are you for a community event?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Alfonso Salas, are you for a community event? I'm assuming not. Linda, are you for a community event? If so, unmute yourself and tell us your event.
Can you guys hear me?
Can you guys hear me?
We, Alfonso and Linda.
Okay, Alfonso, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to, Steve, I have three minutes to speak on behalf of...
No, this is the time for community events. Are you talking, are you announcing an event? One minute?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Linda, are you announcing an event? You can have one minute.
No, I'm confused. I thought this was about the work that was going on on Willard.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I mean...
Okay, okay, nope.
We'll come back to you.
Loretta Stanaway? Do you have an event?
I do.
Okay, you have one minute.
I would like to announce that this year, our annual 5K Run Walk held by the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, our largest fundraiser of the year, will be a virtual race due to the COVID situation. This means that anyone interested in participating in the Run Walk can do so at their discretion anytime, anyplace, any day in October, and all you have to do is register online through the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries link or through runsignup.com, and they have a link there as well. So again, anytime in October, a virtual 5K for the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, accessed through our Facebook or through runsignup.com. Thank you.
Thank you, and I... Pastor John, were you on a community event?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
So I, at Asbury United Methodist Church, we're doing a Red Cross blood drive on Saturday the 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. As you know, with colleges and high schools being shut down, there's not a lot of blood drives that aren't being done now because of that, so we had to fill the gap, so Saturday the 26th, 10 to 4, At Asbury United Methodist Church.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, if you wish to speak under legislative matters, please now start raising your hand for legislative matters, and legislative matters includes the public hearings, the resolutions on the consent agenda, the resolutions under resolutions for action, as well as the ordinances for introduction. So those are the items that can be talked about that are on the agenda that council will be acting on tonight. And with that, while people are raising their hands, oh, and I do want to mention that after the first speaker has finished speaking, we will stop taking additional raised hands, so you have just a couple more minutes to get your hand raised, so please start raising your hand if you wish to talk on those legislative matters. And at this point, we are now to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. Just a few congratulations and thank yous. I want to congratulate everyone at Cristo Rey for a wonderful drive-through fiesta. It was a lot of fun working that day, and thanks to all that came and supported the Cristo Rey Fiesta and ate the incredible food, so that was a lot of fun. I'm excited that our Citizens Academy has begun, thanks to Delisa Fontaine, who's been organizing this, myself and Judy Keeler, we're at the first meeting. Clerk may have also been clerk, I don't know if you were at the last one or you're going to be at the next one, but I know you're going to be involved. Next one, okay. So, and I know city council will be involved in the next one as well, so we're excited about that. We have coming up on Saturday at 9:00 a.m., the next mobile food pantry, the next coronavirus, socially-distanced, coronavirus-friendly, socially-distanced mobile food pantry, which will be at 9:00 a.m. at St. Casimir Parish at 800 West Barnes. We have the Capital City River Run is this Sunday. I will be running, so you can look for my time, which I hope is competitive. And then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this week, we have the Lansing 501 Garden Jam. They do a great job supporting Lansing, and that should be a lot of fun. I was going to mention two neighborhood cleanups, but Councilman Hussein already mentioned them, and if there's anybody out there who wants to do a neighborhood cleanup, please contact Delisa Fontaine, who was our neighborhood coordinator, because we were working with many different neighborhoods to organize cleanups. And finally, I will wish a Happy New Year to all those of the Jewish faith, Rosh Hashanah comes this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are to public comment on...
Wait, I'm sorry, hold on. Councilmember Wood?
This is a question for the mayor. Mayor Shore, you announced your initiative with slowdown traffic in the residential areas. I know that I've received a number of questions concerning the traffic calming measures and the things that are talked about in the press release and part of the information that was brought out. I know currently, we don't have anything in our budget to pay for those types of devices, so the question from the constituents has been, you know, if we fill out this paperwork, if we go through these petitions and asking our neighbors, what's going to happen? And so, I don't know whether you'd have an answer to that as of yet, but if you could expound on it, it would be appreciated.
Well, there are a variety of options, and when they contact, when they contact us, the short term is leasing patrols and speed sleds and things. The long term is the option of traffic calming if the citizens are supportive, and there are a variety of options that can be discussed with our public services staff. We, we don't have a specific line item, but Act 51 dollars can be used for traffic calming, and that's been something we've considered in the past. Now, we're looking to see how much that's coming in for Act 51, because less people are driving, there's less gas tax money that's being used, so for those who don't know, Act 51 dollars are the gas tax dollars that we get back from the state, so those are all available for traffic calming measures. We want to see, we haven't yet had a petition for a speed study and for traffic calming, so first we want to see the speed studies, and then if there is support for traffic calming, then we will have that conversation with those folks on the street. If they're looking for speed bumps, if they're looking for bump outs, there are some options that don't cost a dime. If you want to allow for parking on both sides of the street when that isn't existing now, that is a natural slowdown. So the conversation will be with the neighbors for what options they would like. We'll assess, you know, what the PA 51 dollars are in the current budget, and see if we have dollars available, if there needs to be an assessment, and if there's support for that, and then we'll go into the next budget and see, you know, what we have in line. If we don't have dollars for it, then we'll address it within the next budget and then implement those after that budget takes effect, but there are options that can be done even now if the, if the speed study shows that it's an average over 10 miles an hour over the speed limit for that street, and then if, I believe it's 60% of the neighbors on that street want some kind of a traffic calming or other option. So it's really a conversation to start on, on the first, the short term, if we're going to have police patrols, if we're going to have speed sleds or what, but again, you can't have, we can't have police officers on all 400 miles of our roads, we don't have enough speed sleds, and we're hearing that people are using them to clock how fast they're going, so those are not as effective as they used to be. So we'll look at the short term, we'll look at the long term, and then we'll assess, or we'll figure out the best way to pay for whatever the options are, if we have the dollars within Act 51, or if we don't, the neighbors want to pay, or if we want to wait and put some dollars into the budget for next year, if that's possible.
You did mention assessments, so assessments is also a possibility. That would be the neighborhood who petitioned this, that the potential of assessing them for the installation.
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't feel that we have the dollars within our Act 51 dollars, and it does pass with 60% of the vote, and we can let folks know that this is, you know, or actually, would probably be in the petition, that this would be how we would pay for it now. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's how we would pay for it in the future, but that's how we pay for it now. It's something that they, you know, the voters would, like you said, they would petition for, in essence, an assessment for traffic calming. My hope is that, you know, we can use existing dollars, but it will depend on the costs, it'll depend on the dollars that we have available and what we get back from the state, so nothing is set yet, and as we, when we get to the point where we have a street that, where the neighbors have actually had the speed study, it shows that there are, that people are moving too fast, and then they want this option, the speed, the speed humps option, or I forgot what they're called, those little bump out things. If they want one of those options, we can see if we have the money in the budget for it, and if not, we can offer them, you know, an assessment on their bills if they want a petition for an assessment, or we can wait and see if we can put something in the budget for next year, so it'll all be in conversation with any of those folks as they move forward. And again, our public service director, Andy Kilpatrick, will work with everyone who does that kind of a request.
Thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the food pantry. Did you say it was going to be at St. Casimir?
Yeah, that's what I had written down. Do you have it something different that's...
Well, no, I don't know. I was just, isn't it closed?
I think it's closed for services.
Okay.
But my understanding is we're still having it there.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'll, you know what, I will check that, because I know it's, I know that they're no longer having services, but I'll check that to make sure, but my, my understanding is that they're, they're still allowing for it to be held there, but I will check that, and if that changes, I will email out council. It's a good catch.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, thanks. I was going to say, my, my office is still there, and we're still holding programs there, and it uses the gym, which I'm, I'm sure that, I mean, there's, Father Bill still has keys, and I've got keys, and so I'm sure the facility is still being used for that, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Mayor, you all set? Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, so again, public comments will include the two ordinances for introduction, the resolutions for action, the consent agenda, and the following two public hearings. Number one, in consideration of the ordinance to amend property tax poverty exemption guidelines, and number two, in consideration of a noise special permit for the Hoffman Brothers for September 19th through October 19th, on Saturdays and Sundays, for the Willard Avenue Pump Station and Sanitary Force Main Rehabilitation Project.
Well, that's you.
And did, do you want to have Vice President Hussein give...
Yeah, Vice President Hussein on the property tax exemption guideline.
Sure, so this pertains to Section 890.01, consists of guidelines for the city assessor and the board of review to review and implement poverty exemptions from taxation for property that qualifies under state statute as a principal residence. What this ordinance amendment does is remove the consideration, or remove, sorry, the consideration of property tax credit returns filed in the preceding or current year, meaning one doesn't have to provide that information, because these types of revenues have been determined by the tax tribunal as not eligible types of revenue to consider when vetting tax appeals. It also, there's a second piece to this, it also removes the requirement that the applicant own and occupy a principal residence having a true cash value, which is less than the average true cash value of all principal residential properties in any one geographical area such as the city. Law explained to us, when we set this public hearing, that again, this stemmed from guidance provided by the local state, I'm sorry, by the state tax tribunal. And then, as it pertains to the noise waiver, there is, and it's kind of an interesting situation, we had a lot of conversation pertaining to this in general, in general services. In any event, the Public Service Department is undergoing an effort to reconstruct the existing Willard Avenue sanitary pump station, those are also known as lift stations, and other utilities in that Willard Avenue right of way, this is necessary to support the new McLaren hospital development. Hoffman Brothers is the contractor in this case, they are required to complete a substantial amount of work in a very short timeframe, they have completion date of late October, and due to that, they had initially asked for a waiver of this noise ordinance, sorry, on Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on Sundays from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., from September 19th through October 19th, 2020. However, as part of our general services proceedings, we had learned, unfortunately, that they had experienced some vandalism to their systems, and so they have actually since amended their request to extend now through October 25th. We had quite a bit of discussion in general services regarding that extra week, specifically the public hearing notices, and in whether or not we needed to essentially set up another public hearing to consider that week, that additional week essentially that they're requesting. The other piece of it is that they are required to send out notices, the Public Service Department, sorry, is required to send out notices to the affected residents or property owners, which I think was about 43 different properties, and that has to happen 12 days prior to the public hearing. It was determined that we actually do not set public, which we didn't know, we actually do not need to, per state statute, publish public hearings for noise waivers in local newspapers, and so we did not do that, so we were clear on that. The other piece was the notices that went out, so we did inspect the notices that went out to each of the 43 property owners, those notices... owners. Those notices did not, President Spatafor, actually include the dates that the request was for, but rather just the public hearing date. So that being said, actually, it was law that opined that we were clear to move forward with the public hearing. So unless my General Service Committee members have anything else to add, that's all I got.
Anyone looking to add to that? All right. Thus concludes our public hearings this evening.
Okay, so again, after the first speaker, we will stop accepting additional raised hands. So you will have three minutes to address the public. And the first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Chris Umplett. Go ahead, Loretta.
Am I unmuted?
There you are. We hear you now.
Okay. Kmart, 5400 South Cedar. That is up for consideration for approval of the zoning request change. And I do not support that change for a couple of different reasons, one of which I still believe that we're selling ourselves short, as we so often do in this city, by refusing to wait and see if we can't get a better offer than what we have at the moment, because we're worried we'll lose anything at all. We have several other options there that I would like to see considered. There's talk about wanting to make it a family destination location, something that could be entertaining and recreational. And I know when we had a, a citizens meeting outside of the facility with the developers not too long ago, there were some other attenders there who were interested in putting forth a proposal to have it become a combination gym and entertainment facility. I'm not sure where they're at with that. But if there's any possibility of that coming to fruition, I would much rather see something of that nature than to see another storage facility, which will compete with existing storage facilities. And I just, I can't get my mind around the thought that we actually need that much more storage facility at this end of town. So I do not support the rezoning for the Kmart to become a U-Haul site. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the proposal for the city market. On the whole, it sounds good. And on the whole, I support it. There are a couple of things that I find a little bit troublesome and would like to see examined a little further and ironed out a little more specifically. One of them is the monthly rent seems to me to be incredibly low. And I think that there should be some discussion about whether or not it could be increased and how much it could be increased. And the other is that there is a clause in the lease agreement that leads me to believe at some point in the future, somewhere like three years down the line, the city could consider putting it to a vote to the public to sell the site and the land to the leaser. And that, to me, is a pretty big stumbling block. So those are my two concerns. On the whole, though, I support the proposal and hope that we can find ways to address those two issues and take those roadblocks out of a complete consent. Thank you.
And thank you. The next speaker is Chris Umplett. And then Alfonso Salas.
Hi, I'm a resident of Frandora Hills. Comment on the Montgomery drain. I don't see the timer going. You have me? Do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
There we go. Okay. I understand that while in the past, using static runoff coefficients for the calculations of assessments has been a standard practice of the Drain Commission. In this case, I've heard you all say you want it to be fair. I don't believe it can be a standard, uniform calculation and also be fair, because within our district, there are very different types of lots between the residential properties, as well as between the commercial properties. Every spring, one of the activities my kids look forward to is feeding the ducks that fly down to the pond in my neighbor's backyard. We can stand at our fence and throw bread to them. And I think anecdotally, that demonstrates how most of our runoff isn't going into the street. It's staying in our yard. It takes a week or two to soak into the ground. And so we don't have runoff going into the street. Whereas at certain commercial properties, there are no places where water can go anywhere but in the sewer. And so I know there's not a lot of time now, but there has been time. There's been a couple of years where estimates could have been made either on a property by property level, or in a block, you know, you could have divided the area into blocks. And it could have been, the runoff coefficients could have been based more on the science, on what the properties looked like, how they graded, their vegetation, et cetera. So we want to ask the council to push back on the city and require them to come up with runoff coefficients that reflect more the reality of the commercial and residential properties in the district, so that we all pay more of our fair share.
All right. Thank you. Next is Alfonso Salas, followed by Mike Lynn.
My name is Alfonso Salas, 10286 La Piet Lane. I would like to thank our city council members and President Peter Spatafor for having me here today. I would like to talk today on behalf of Mayor Andy Shore and Chief of Police Darryl Green. Does any one of you remember, what was one of the very first things that Mayor Shore did as mayor? I feel personally that he is being attacked by false accusations. And we all know, and a lot of you city council members know that we're here today. And we have that role to honor a great American Navy veteran and union organizer, Cesar Estrada Chavez. We've been having since 1993.
Mr. Salas, we're on legislative matters, things that council will be acting on tonight. What legislative matter are you discussing? What item are you acting on tonight?
Yeah, I thought this was to talk in, regarding to a.
No, this is regarding legislative matters that council will be addressing tonight.
Okay, when can I go on then?
At the end of the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Next, we have Mike Lynn.
Hello, a couple of things. One, for once, I'm in agreeance with Loretta. That's crazy how that happened. I agree about the U-Haul on South Cedar, or the Kmart building on South Cedar. I wanted to be moved back into, or into a U-Haul. It's, it's, it's almost predatory how they're packing the south side with these storage units. I don't know which part of the legislation is going to be talking about that today. But I know that the people are speaking, and the people would like for it to be something to provide and give back to our community rather than something that's there when we're losing all of our housing during these eviction times. It's predatory how that's working. Aside from that, the speed thing, you know, we're talking about all of this policing and, and, you know, just a couple of months ago, Brian T. Jackson and Chief Green brought in a resolution to change the way that you guys police secondary infractions and stops and so on and so forth. This, this seems predatory also. It seems like this can be in some real shady area with this speed thing. And also, it seems like it was rolled out with no real plan on how this thing is going to work. I just don't understand how that goes. It's like, we're going to shove out this whole, the mayor's speed trap, such and such, and get all the people who aren't paying attention super excited, when there's no plan involved here. I mean, there's no plan at all. And I know neighborhoods are already asking for speed bumps. I mean, that's just something that's been talked about forever.
I apologize for interrupting, but this is only for legislative matters. If you want to address the other issues, there's certainly time at the end of the meeting. But if you could stick to the legislative issues in front of council, we'd appreciate it for this.
Yes, I thought that being that it was already talked about without interruption, that that was part of the legislation. So if I'm wrong about the speed bumps, then I apologize.
It, it's not, it's not up for action this evening. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Okay.
We still have a minute and 20 seconds, though, if you wish to address any more of the legislative issues.
I just was addressing what we talked about so far. Other than that, I have nothing else to say other than still resign Andy. I don't know how you're even out here trying to smile and act like nothing's going on. See you guys in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. And that takes us to the consent, I'm sorry, to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, the property tax poverty exemption.
That'll be going to the committee of the whole.
And number two, the noise special permit.
We'll be acting on that this evening. So we'll just keep that here.
Okay. We are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice President, I have not received notice from any members of the council that they wish to pull anything. Is that different for you?
No. So President Spatafor, the consent agenda, as I understand it, will include a confirmation of appointment for Price Dobernick as a member of the South MLK Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board. That would be for a term to expire July 31, 2023. Also, a confirmation of reappointment for Mr. James Bell as an at-large member of the historic district commission for a term to expire June 30 of 2023. And coming out of the committee on general services is a confirmation of appointment for Cheryl Tennis as an at-large member of the Human Relations and Community Services Board for a term ending June 30 of 2024.
And before you make that motion, I see Councilmember Wood has her hand up.
Yeah, it's just a point of order, President Spatafor. There was a woman by the name of Linda that showed up on our panel, who during the announcement phase said that she wanted to talk about Willard Avenue, which is the noise waiver we are going to be voting on tonight. I do not know if she is still on the line under a different number. I see Linda isn't there, but I'm wondering if Linda is there under a number, if we could allow her to talk, because we are voting on this this evening. Thank you.
That's her calling. Linda, if you are there, if you, if you're on the phone, I don't see your name, just dial star nine, and that'll raise your hand if that's you. If not, we'll, we'll move on. But I do not see Linda as she was, as the person was previously here, nor do I see a phone number raising their hand. So thank you, Councilmember Wood, for drawing that to our attention. Mr. Vice President, if you'd like to, hold on, got a hand up. That is, oh, nope, that was Carol. Mr. Vice President.
Move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been moved. Would the clerk please call the roll?
On adoption of the consent agenda, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
That's a yes. And Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA 00 is, the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to resolutions for action. And the first item is the noise special permit under the Committee of General Services.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move. I gave extensive, obviously, background information leading into the public hearing. So that being said, I would move the noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers, Inc. for a noise waiver request.
Very good. Motion before us. Any further discussion from the council? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. I'm looking at the agenda, not at the resolution. On the agenda, it says September 19 to October 19. Has the resolution been changed to the 25th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, and the, we also requested, which the Public Service Department said they would do, is if they are working on Sunday, they will do door tags, letting the public know that they will be working on Sunday ahead of the event. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just add very quickly as well, because when we introduced this originally, they were only going to be working on Saturdays. And I should have said that. Thank you, Councilman Wood. They were only going to be working on Saturdays on a kind of an emergency basis. They are now going to be working every Saturday. And so what they're actually going to do is drop, drop a door knocker, or a door hanger, sorry, with those Saturday dates. And then as Councilman Wood said, if the need to work on a Sunday should arise, they will drop door hangers, making sure they're alerting folks to that fact. So thank you.
Thank you. So the motion before us. No further discussion. Mr. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
On the special, noise special permit, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Robert Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA 00, that resolution is adopted. That takes.
For what it's worth, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip you?
Yes, on both accounts.
Oh.
No, just yes and yes. Move on.
Okay. To the Committee of the Whole, the first item is the grant acceptance for second tech and civic life.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. We had a pretty extensive presentation in Committee of the Whole. It was wonderfully done, if I must say so, myself by Mr. Swope, all things related to the upcoming election. And then this grant, which the clerk and his team have applied for in order to expand absentee and early voting to any Lansing resident that would like to take advantage of that opportunity. In terms of the specifics, the grant amount is $443,000. I'm sorry, $443,742, with a city match of $0. If we break that number down, you're looking at about $309,000 in good and services, and $139,000 in personnel. Specifically, the grant will support the purchase and installation of 12 new safe and secure drop boxes located at all six fire stations, four community centers, the CATA Transportation Center, the City Cemetery Office. And I believe all of those are supposed to be installed hopefully by September 24. There's also one that will be provided by the Election Bureau. And then if you add that to the, we already have, we will have 15 drop boxes across the city. And I believe Clerk Swope said that that means that nobody will have to travel more than a half mile to get to one of these drop boxes. This grant would also pay, my understanding, would pay for hazard pay bonuses for election precinct and absentee county board workers. It would also allow for expanded in-person early voting opportunities by supporting extra staff needed for hours at the South Washington, Washington Election Unit, which is at 2500 South Washington Avenue, and that would start in October. This grant will also support an additional satellite location at the Frieder Schmidt South Side Community Center, which would operate mid-October to late October. And that would actually bring us up to three satellite locations for early voting. There will also be an expanded voter education and outreach effort, including 20 billboard messages across the city, media buys encouraging and informing voters, sorry, across all mediums. And lastly, with the additional funding support from the Election Bureau, we will be able to acquire high-speed tabulators for AV ballots, which will result in AV ballots being counted four times faster than in the August primary election. As President Spatafor remarked during Committee of the Whole, we certainly commend Clerk Swope, sorry, and his team for being innovative in their approach to making sure they're increasing accessibility during these very difficult times. So that being said, I would move the resolution for this grant acceptance.
Mr. Vice President, are there other questions? All right, seeing none, let us, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the grant for your office?
Okay, on the grant, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
AEA 00, the resolution is adopted. So we are to the disposition of city property to the Lansing Housing Commission.
Mr. Vice President.
All right. So just a little bit of background, we've been working this issue for a while now. Earlier this year, we actually amended Chapter 260 to permit the Lansing Housing Commission own property for its purposes in its own name. We had a lot of discussion regarding access to capital, disposition of properties in the lead up to that vote. We had a pretty public process, didn't receive much in the way of public opposition. And so we did ultimately move to amend Chapter 260. And so essentially where we are at now is we are looking at executing the next step of that process. And that's transferring our interest, which is really kind of a name only, and the properties that are owned in our name for the use by the LHC, or that the Lansing Housing Commission owns in its name on behalf of the City of Lansing. or that the Lansing Housing Commission owns in its name on behalf of the City of Lansing. So again, we're transferring that transferring that directly to the Lansing Housing Commission. This is by quick claim deed. This does include in total, I think it's 227 properties. They consist of multifamily units. Lansing Housing Commission typically refers to those as amps, as well as one and two family scatter site houses. The, as part of this transfer, the Lansing Housing Commission will pay to the city $1 per property. We had a public hearing on August 31st, and again, I didn't receive comments of opposition. To my knowledge, we have also not received any email correspondence on this issue that is in opposition. As part of Committee of the Whole process today, Councilwoman Wood did make the clarification for the public that, again, we own these properties in name only. Our properties were purchased with HUD dollars, and LHC has always, for, you know, intents and purposes, owned and managed these properties. Further, we did have the Director of the Lansing Housing Commission with us, Mr. Doug Fleming. He clarified again, as part of our Committee of the Whole process, that the Section 18 process that they have to go through to dispose of properties and to make a $60 million investment into their, the remaining properties, they have to actually have their name on the deeds in order to execute that. So further, when we look at selling of the homes, there was some discussion about, as an example, you know, selling some of these properties to Mikey 23 Foundation, again, among others. But again, in order to advance those conversations, the Lansing Housing Commission has to have legal ownership over these properties. So with that said, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Are there other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so much a question, just explain my no vote today. Yes to everything Councilperson Hussein said as far as a rundown, except the only thing I'll add is that there was no efforts, in my opinion, to like get a solid idea of what, if anything, we can do with these properties besides just supposedly pass them over for a dollar and it's name only. I don't know why we're voting if that's the case. But there's all these scattered property homes. And again, in Lansing and all throughout the country, there's, there's conversations and demands for different equitable solutions. And when we talk about houses and homes and homeownership, and even the history of redlining and all the past impediments to homeownership for certain people, that I would just like to see Lansing do something with these, not all of them, but some of them. I did have a conversation where, with Mr. Fleming, where they are in some conversations with, for example, Mikey 23 and maybe other groups. But just the fact that those are just, sounds like initial conversations and nothing more certain. I know there is argument, you have to own it before you can sell it or deal with it. However, there are also, all the time, people buy and sell real estate before they actually have it, and it can be contingent upon a first sale. So without anything certain, I'm just going to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Smirka, can you clarify for us the ownership of these properties, please?
Properties are named in the City of Lansing for housing commission purposes. It's similar to some of the property for the Board of Water and Light. It's held in the name of the City of Lansing for.
We don't have the legal ability to sell these properties.
You have the title to it, but there may be encumbrances on it with.
Purchase with HUD dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion of the clerk, would please call the roll.
On the disposition of properties, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven years, one nay, the resolution is adopted, and we are to the CARES Act funds.
Vice, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so this is actually the second time we've done this this year. Earlier in the year, we did receive an allocate, I think it was about 1.2 million dollars in Community Development Black Grant Funds and then another $600,000 in what are called Emergency Solution Grant Funds. And those were meant to help us respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, among other things. That said, bit of good news, we actually received a second funding allocation in the amount of $1,282,000. And these aren't emergency solution funds to assist the homeless or those receiving homeless assistance, as well as engage in homeless prevention activities, such as getting out in front of evictions and things of that nature. All aimed, obviously, at working to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. As noted earlier tonight in Committee of the Whole, this has actually doubled the amount of the emergency solution grants funds we received as part of the first allocation. And as was the case with the first round of CARES Act funds, the city is required to submit amendments to the annual action plan in order to receive these CARES Act funds. And that is why, sorry, the resolution is before us tonight. I think the only other thing that was shared during the Committee of the Whole that I've left out is that we do need to spend this money by September, I believe it's September 2022. Agencies can be reimbursed, partnering agencies and things of that nature with these dollars that engaged in eligible expenses related to COVID-19. So that being said, I would move the resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. The motion is before us, is there discussion on this item? All right, seeing no discussion, if the clerk would please call the roll.
On the resolution, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight years, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. So we are to the Public Improvement 3 Montgomery Drainage.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so most folks are pretty well versed on this. I'll still give you a bit of background information. Ultimately, 64% of the cost of this project will be the responsibility of the City of Lansing. 50% of the cost, which is $11,850,000, will be paid by a .26 mil drain code tax, which will be levied on all property owners in the City of Lansing. And then there's another 50% of the costs, again, $11,850,000, that will be paid by a special assessment levy down the benefit of properties within the drainage district. To move forward on that special assessment, we did approve Public Improvement Phases 1 and 2. That was earlier in August, which allowed the Public Service Department to put together plans and specifications, sorry, regarding the assessment, including the drain assessment methodology and to work with the assessor's office to determine the assessment role and properties to be assessed. We were initially, there was some confusion, we were initially set to take a look at that. I should say, setting of the public hearing on August 31st, and that would have been for September 14th. However, we had not received the role in advance of the August 31st Committee of the Whole meeting. The city assessor has since completed the role, and we are now looking to set the public hearing for October 12th at 7:00 PM. We have heard from some residents already as part of our Committee of the Whole process, as well as public comment tonight, that this, they feel that this is playing out too quickly and that they don't have the necessary information to maybe even determine their position on the assessment. Others feel like the methods put in place determine each property's owner, you know, their assessment essentially is flawed. So as a result, some property owners, some residential property owners, I should say, have asked for an informational meeting similar to the one that was held for commercial property owners, so they can learn more and weigh in. As folks heard earlier, President Spatafor and Councilman Betts, along with our Public Service Director, Andy Kilpatrick, have committed to working together with residents of the Frandori Hills neighborhood to host a socially-distanced, as President Spatafor put it, neighborhood meeting prior to the public hearing, so that folks, you know, are fully informed on the processes we move forward with our process. So that being said, I am going to move to set the public hearing for October 12th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Yes, that is correct. So as I said earlier, let me know how we can put that together, folks watching, listening, paying attention, and we will make it happen. If not, I'll reach out early next week. Okay, no other hands are raised, it looks. So we will go ahead and have the clerk call the roll.
On the setting of the public hearing, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight years, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. We are to ordinances for introduction by the Committee on Development and Planning. And the first ordinance, I'll read into the record, the following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing that code of ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code for Property Located at Z82019. That's 5400 South Cedar Street, rezoning from F Commercial and J Parking Districts to G2 Wholesale District, with conditions, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read up first time by title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was, this is the U-Haul facility that's actually on the corner of Jolly and Cedar. They are proposing a rezone for the, the property on the south side of Jolly and Cedar, previously owned by Kmart. They want to expand their operations across the street. And they're going to have storage as part of the facility. They're also have some standalone storage on the outside. They propose to, they propose to also reserve some space that adjacent to Cedar Street for commercial. They had initially had this on for earlier this year, but asked to have it pulled so they could do some outreach to the community. They have done that. It is my understanding that they had a public information meeting and explained their proposal to members of the public. As part of this rezone, it is a conditional rezone. No marijuana facilities of any kind can be established on the property. The site improvements shown on the plan, which were dated 8/29/2019, includes landscaping, a connection path to the path and Parkway Trail that is adjacent to the building. They also talk about bicycle rest areas and some other improvements. Let's see. One of the things we asked them in development and planning was, were they going to keep their existing operation on the north side of the north corner of Jolly and Cedar? And they said yes. So this would be an expansion of that facility. Keep in mind, they also have a facility that's bordering 496 on Cedar Street, further south. I also realized over the weekend, they have U-Haul trucks at the Logan Street Plaza. And so that was, that was something I noticed this weekend. I had explained to them that during the public hearing that they really needed to explain the need for so many locations. And I think that they are going to be prepared to explain that. With that, I would move the resolution to establish a public hearing set for Monday, October 12th, 2020, for the rezone.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Is there any, are there questions, Councilmember Wood?
I just want to state for the record, no matter what's in the site plan, we're not approving a site plan. What we would be doing is approving a rezone.
That's correct.
Afterwards, anything can happen with. So I just, I just want us to be clear on that. We've been in this, we've been in this position before where we've approved something based on what we thought the site plan was going to be, and the property might not have gone through. The zoning has been changed, and that's what we have. So the only thing that we can, you know, hold anyone's feet to the fire is a conditional rezoning, which has to do with the medical marijuana or a marijuana facility. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, just very quickly, that, that was one of the things I was going to address. I appreciate Councilwoman Wood addressing that. That was actually brought up as part of our development and planning process, our vetting process. I really thought the committee did a fantastic job asking questions and vetting this, you know, the correct way. It was also discussed, and this is, you know, more for maybe the public certification, but the fact that we have to move this forward for a public hearing, and we do have to move this ultimately forward out of committee for a vote by the full body. It's the, you know, it's the way the Zoning Enabling Act kind of interfaces with our own charter, as well as our ordinances. And so, you know, there were some folks that I think were confused based on so many of the concerns that was discussed, the fact, you know, we then moved it out of committee for a public hearing, but we are legally required to do that. And again, we will be legally required to bring this back before the full body for a vote. So I just wanted folks to understand that. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that we've gotten quite a few letters from members of the South Lansing Business Association. The, the U-Haul representatives have done a really great job as far as allaying any kind of concerns specifically among the business community. And folks in the business community are very supportive on this. So I think we'll probably be hearing from them quite a bit during the public hearing.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein, your hand is still up, or you just, thumbs up if you're all set. All set, okay. Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. I just, I also wanted to clarify, I know Patricia, you said adjacent to 496, it's actually 96. But, but yes, and I have seen the support from the South Lansing business community. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the same support among my constituent base. You know, there has been a handful of people that have spoke out in support of this, but there has been overwhelming support so far, or I should say, not support for this project. So this is, it's going to be a tough vote for me, but I please, I encourage people, if they are living in the South Lansing Second Ward, to please reach out to me and voice your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah, I was going to, I'm going to echo what Councilmember Garza said. I mean, I've received, you know, letters of support from the business community, but we've received a number of comments from citizens against it. So I agree, it's, you know, we're looking at, you know, everything, and it is going to be a tough vote. I think that, again, one of the things we need to look at is, you know, how many, you know, storage units are too many? And, you know, for me, you know, you got the one that's adjacent to 96. Thank you, Councilmember Garza. You've got the one already on Cedar Street. You've got one that's downtown Lansing that's a U-Haul, if I'm not mistaken. And now I see trucks on, on South Martin Luther King. And, and so that, that's a concern for me. We've already got a number of storage facilities in South Lansing. And so it kind of gets back to my concern of, you know, we have this, this big building and, you know, is there a plan other than storage units to develop it into a useful purpose that generates tax dollars, that generates revenue, that, you know, all of that stuff? And so I would hope that, you know, everybody looks at it and comes to the public hearing and hopefully the owners come to the public hearing and provide the information to address some of the concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. That appears to be it from folks on setting the public hearing for October 12th at 7:00 PM. So, Mr. Clerk, seeing no further discussion, I ask that you please call the roll.
Okay, on setting the public hearing on the ordinance, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight years, zero nays, the public hearing is set on the ordinance. And that takes us to the next ordinance that I will read into the record from the Committee on Development and Planning as well. Councilmember Spitzley introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter 1420 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances by consolidating the adoption of the state, single state construction code act, the act including the state electrical, mechanical, and plumbing codes and creating a single. Construction Code Act, the Act, including the state electrical, mechanical, and plumbing codes, and creating a single construction board of appeals pursuant to the Act and repeal the sections of chapters fourteen twenty-two, fourteen twenty-two, and fourteen twenty-six, which provide for individual adoption of the state plumbing, electrical, and mechanical codes, and created individual boards of appeal for those codes. The ordinances uh, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Um, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is um, consolidation, as Clerk Swob said, of a number of um, boards that we have um, within the city of Lansing. Um, i- is my understanding um, that um, the administration um, suggested the consolidation of these boards because um, it's more efficient, and they were having um, some concerns with um, quarms on the board. And so um, the uh, the, the, I'm sorry. So these, these different boards have been consolidated um, into, into one board, which is, if I'm not, I'm trying to read the thing, it's a state construction code act. Um. Please forgive me on this. I'm trying to, I'm trying to um, remember what.
Councilmember Spitzley, I think that maybe Councilmember Garza has something to add. He, I, this might be, or you, or you have a question, Jeremy? I don't know if you were trying to help.
Yeah, uh, well, it's into one, it, it's in one board, just real, and I'll just finish. So some of the, some of the concern was um, that um, you know, you have, you have plumbers, you have electrical, um, and you have other uh, skilled trades, and they would be potentially making um, decisions on issues um, that really were outside of their expertise. Um, some of the other concerns were that um, is there a need to consolidate those boards and that maybe there, you know, there are people out there that are willing to serve? And so um, I'll just kind of move the, move the uh, resolution. So the public hearing would be set for Mon- Monday, September twenty first, twenty twenty um, to amend uh, chapter fourteen twenty of the Lansing Codified Ordinances by consolidating um, the adoption of a single state construction code act, including the state electrical, mechanical, and plumbing codes, and creating a single construction board of appeals pursuant to the Act. Um, that would also repeal sections fourteen twenty-two, fourteen twenty-four, and fourteen twenty-six, which provided for the individual adoption of the state plumbing, electrical, and mechanical codes, and created individual boards of appeal for those codes. And with that, I'll move the resolution.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Um, and I didn't mean to interrupt. I didn't know.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's fine.
Yep. Uh, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. And yes, I was not trying to uh, um, I guess, speak for uh, Councilwoman Spitzley. I just had a concern with it, and that's all I wanted to state. You know, I, I, you know, I understand that they stated, I talked to Steve Swan today with Building Safety, and he, he mentioned that uh, the only board that had problems with uh, a quorum was the electrical board. And um, I did reach out to the different trades, and um, no one's reached out to the I D W to see if there was any uh, electricians that were available. They said they have definitely uh, plenty of candidates that are available to sit on that board. And there was also concern in the different trades that um, that someone would be speaking on behalf of another trade, you know? And uh, so their concern is, and I, I can only imagine they'll be here for public comment, but their concern is, you know, having a different trade speak on behalf of their trade. And uh, that is, that is a concern of mine as well. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Wood.
Uh, does anyone know from the committee whether the uh, changing this um, to a construction board, according to the statute, um, whether there is a requirement for different trades to sit on, on this? Was there any research done on, on that?
Uh, anyone from the committee want to add to that?
They did have, they talked about in the ordinance, um, the makeup of the boards. And I'm, I'm, let's see. So um, pursuant to the Act, is the um, they'll have seven voting members serving staggered four-year terms. Three design professionals being architects or engineers, registered as such. One residential builder, registered as such. One master or journey plumber, registered as such. One master or journeyman electrician, registered as such, and one mechanical contractor, registered as such.
Um, you know, I'm anxious to hear the public hearing on this because this is a board that does not come back to us once the decision is made. Um, you know, this is um, one that goes to Circuit Court if there's, if there's a problem with this. So I, I'm anxious to, to understand this a little bit better. So thank you.
You're welcome. One of the things that happened during the, during the committee meeting, um, we just so happened to have Price Dobernick there. Um, um, being um, discussed for being a member of the M L K Corridor, and he did express concern as well about the, the board and, you know, similar to what Councilwoman Gar- Garza said about, you know, folks who may not have that expertise making decisions for other trades, and also about um, you know, the fact that, you know, whether or not, you know, quarms were there for boards, or, you know, who was reached out to be appointed on the board. So he, I, I suspect he'll be there as well, but he did men- uh, express some concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see um, no further hands from council members. So Mr. Clerk, if we could move forward with setting the public hearing.
Okay, on the public hearing, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A E A's zero N A's, the resolution is adopted, uh, so the public hearing is set. And that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. So now is the time to raise your hand if you're a member of the public and uh, would like to address the city council on any city government related matters. So this is, this is the time to sign up. Um, after the first speaker is when we will close the signup period. So please go ahead and get signed up if you wish to address the city council on city government related matters at this time. Uh, in the meantime, we're to reports of city officers, uh, boards and commissioners, commissions.
Oh yeah, that's me. Uh. We could, uh, Mr. Vice President, if I could please have a motion to have the items read and refer, referrals made by me.
Sure. Um, so.
Okay, the motion before us, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call as all.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Member Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A E A's zero N A's, the motion is adopted. So we have a letter from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards and authorities.
Place that on file.
Uh, grant acceptance of the tech civic life grant.
Now place on file.
Uh, lease agreement for the Lansing Shuffle Board and Social Club LLC at three twenty-five Riverfront Drive.
That's going back to the committee of the whole.
A letters from the mayor regarding Lansing Economic Development Corporation Downtown Lansing Riverfront Project, the Lansing Shuffle Board and Social Club LLC.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, Z two tw- of twenty twenty, uh, fifty-five twenty-eight South Martin Luther King, rezoning from D one Professional Office District to F Commercial District.
Development plan.
Z three of twenty twenty, ten thirty South Holmes Street, rezoning from B Residential and D one Professional Office Districts to D M four Residential District.
Uh, development and planning.
And Communications and Petitions, a joint appointment of A and A Neil to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Public safety.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Um, do we have council members wishing to make remarks? I'll just point out that I know that uh, Alfonso Salas and Mike Lynn both had comments at the beginning that uh, should be at the back. And so just to remind you folks that your hands are not good. If you wanted to make a comment, other than that, I will move to Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I just, I went on the city website, and the distribution is not at St. Cas this weekend. The mobile food pantry is at Tabernacle of David.
Thank you.
That's what it says on the city website, and that's at twenty-six forty-five West Holmes Road.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Um, other comments from council members? Okay, uh, seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Uh, the, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Uh, so I will also check on that. Um, my calendar most definitely says St. Cas, so I'll check on that and email council members. Thank you, Councilwoman Dunbar. I'm not sure why there's a discrepancy there. So thank you for checking that, and we will assume that the councilwoman is right if that's what it says on the website. And if that has changed for any reason, I will email council members and we will fix the website, but let's assume that it's Tabernacle of David. But I thought that one already happened, but it's possibly pushed there uh, because of the St. Cas um, closure maybe, but we'll check that. And thank you for, for that, and I will get an email out to council with the accurate place for the mobile food pantry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Clerk, I think that concludes our comments.
Okay, we are to public comment, and again, I have until the first speaker finishes speaking to raise your hand. Uh, participant window or on a phone star nine, on a Mac option Y on Windows Alt Y. Um, and the first speaker is Judge Cynthia Ward. Uh, go ahead, Judge Ward.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Clerk. I hope you're all well. I'm Cynthia Ward, fifty-four A District Court Judge. I'm here simply to remind tenants and landlords that housing assistance is still available. There are agencies which can help pay some or all of the outstanding rent, and that information about the agency, the agency contact information and additional information is available on the District Court's website. So I just wanted to make sure. I know that I have spoken to council about this information before. Certainly, it can be repeated. Um, we're still having a full docket of landlord tenant eviction cases at the District Court. So I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that rental assistance is still available. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Um, we are to Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, I believe I'm unmuted. Okay, I just want to be certain that there's clarification of an issue relating to the new um, voter drop boxes for absentee ballots. I've been told uh, that the cemetery courtesy office, which used to be the city cemetery office, is where one of those boxes will be for drop-off uh, absentee ballots. So if that is accurate, we need to be very clear in all kinds of communications and directions that it is the cemetery courtesy office at seventeen oh nine East Mount Hope, not the city cemetery office in the Foster Community Center, if that is the case. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and it will be, there will be one at Foster and at the, I guess, courtesy office. I didn't know it had a different name. Uh, Morgan Elizabeth Cole followed by Emily uh, Suraha. Go ahead, Morgan.
Thank you, Council. My name is Morgan Elizabeth Cole, and I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm currently running for the Thirtieth Circuit Court Judge here in Ingham County. The seat's currently held by uh, Judge Lawless, and it is a domestic uh, family law and juvenile matters uh, here in Ingham County. I just wanted to take a moment to say hi. Thank you all for the work you're doing and just tell you a little bit about myself. I'm currently the Ingham County Probate Register and Court Administrator. I've worked for Ingham County, gosh, I think it's been twelve years uh, in the, in the judicial setting. So I've worked not only for Judge Akalina, the Ingham County Clerk Byram, in front of the court as a conciliator investigator, um, the chief deputy circuit court, but again, now is the probate register. So why am I running for this job? I think that anyone who comes to the position of a judge with a mindset that's any different than this, that I'm no different than the people that appear before me, has no business seeking this position. And I can tell you that that is my goal. I understand how the judicial system affects children and families. I have the most experience in a judicial role. I know the importance of intervening when there's domestic abuse or substance abuse, uh, having timely dispute for custody matters handled. Um, and I also cannot begin to stress public access of courts. As a probate register, as soon as the pandemic happened, my first priority was keeping public access to the courts. I'm ensuring that our branch of government continues on and serves the public as paramount. Uh, so I live in Meridian Township. I have three children, and I apologize if they scream while I'm, I'm talking. It's about to be bedtime. So um, I'm involved in our community, whether it be junior league on different boards throughout um, our community involving children. But this really is a personal uh, a personal, and um, I guess you could say, journey for me in seeking this position. I was a child um, who suffered from a parent who lost the battle with addiction, and I wish there was court inter- intervention early on. And so this, this goal is to help families that have been in all of those positions for the best interest of the children. So with that being said, I thank you very much uh, for the time to speak to you all. I hope I get to meet you all in per- in person outside of Zoom. But um, if you have any questions, please feel free to visit my website, uh, morgancoleforjudge.com, email me, call me. Um, and I look forward to speaking with y'all. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily uh, Suraha followed by Alfonso Salas.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Emily Searja. I'm a resident of the First Ward. I'm uh, I'm calling in tonight to express my disappointment to learn that um, this council's Committee on uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion is considering recommending uh, ex- an expansion to the police budget. Um, Councilmember Spitsy, Spitzley, President Spatafor, with all due respect, as res- representatives of the council on the committee, I'm unsure why you continue to misinterpret the many impassioned community members' calls to defund the police as requests to instead pad the police budget, or to prop up what appear to be carefully selected individuals whose values are aligned with those of the police, as with the social worker in the most recent committee meeting. Defunding the police means defunding the police, and at this point, the failures of the committee, the council, and Mayor Shore to recognize this feels like willful ignorance. I would like to once again express my support for the re- resolution put forth by council members Betts and Dunbar, and I urge the council to listen to the vocal and engaged community members who consider, who continue to show up for true justice, a future without police in our community. We have not forgotten this fight, and I thank you for listening. I yield my remaining time.
Thank you. Next, we have Alfonso Salas followed by Mike Lim.
Good afternoon. My name is Alfonso Salas, ten two eighty-six Lafayette Lane. I would like to thank uh, you, our city council members, and President Peter Spatafor for having me here today. I would like to talk today on behalf of Mayor Andy Shore and to please, there. Do anyone of you remember what was one of the first things that uh, Mayor Andy Shore did as mayor? I don't know. A lot of you, um, a lot of you probably do, because you were there in city council when uh, you voted unanimously, eight to zero, to honor the great American hero, Sister Estrada Chavez, by working with uh, with the city council, with the Old Town Business Association, and the community, the city of Lansing. In early of January, his first year, as you know, um, that was what he did. That was one of the very first things that he did. And he was able to bring not only the, the, the Travis Committee and hotel businesses and, and everybody that was against and street naming to a compromise. He was able to uh, who were able to honor this great American veteran and union organizer. great American veteran and union organizer. In East and West East Grand River, it says on Chavez Avenue. Since the mid-'90s, the Latino community has struggled to do this after the reversal of Grand Avenue. We tried not once, but twice to meet with Mayor Verge Benaro on how to best honor Cesar Chavez. The sensors were that he had other sketches to do and more important issues to take care of. And something like we were not important enough to him. And if you know, Andy Shore, I feel like he's been attacked unfairly. And not only has he helped with that, but me and my wife also are sponsors of a nonprofit group. It's called the Southside Boys and Girls Sports Program. For over 30 years, we have many sponsored kids to play the sport that they love to play, which is baseball and softball. They come from mainly minority and low-income families. Again, Mayor Benaro refused to meet us when we wanted to discuss an issue that affected the kids. And Andy Shore, not only did he listen to us, but he met with us in person and took charge of the issue that was in hand. I feel that this is more of a political issue. I feel that unfortunately, he has come to this. And by that, I mean, there's only a few that are using it to their advantage for political gains. I also want to talk about Chief of Police Derek Green. I feel that he is right when he talks about the safety of the City of Lansing, that we need to keep a police force. As a business owner, I had seen a death happen in my area from somebody trying to go through the roof of a building and getting stuck on the, and robbing businesses in the south side. This is why we move our business from the south side because of the unsafe.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Your, your three minutes is up.
Can I have a couple seconds to just to finish it, please?
That's up to the president.
Yes, sir.
We have been granting exceptions. I'm gonna say, let's just move on, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mike Lynn.
Hello. I'm, I feel like God blessed me to be able to go last after what that was. That's remarkable, Andy, how you got that to happen. So the Fiesta was this weekend, you were picture, taking pictures with all of the people, and then you have Alfonso Salas come on here and big up you. I mean, just what lows will you go to, man? You're not gonna be able to buy the minorities in the city. That's crazy and ridiculous. I can't even believe that you just had that. I mean, his talking points were the exact same talking points you put in the email for a fundraiser. This is political, there's just a very few people that are doing this. I just don't even understand, man, what it is you do other than kiss babies, lie, and propaganda. Um, if I remember correctly, I don't know, maybe the council couldn't say, I was in Mayor, or I was in Verge Benaro's office the day that the Cesar Chavez was going to vote. It was one of the very last things that he did here. I'm not for positive whether or not it got through or not, but I was up in his office for my, the LCHS forum, and we were having a conversation with him. And one of the very last things that he said is he wanted to make that happen before he left here. So I think that may be false, that Mayor Shore did that. I'm not positive. Maybe we can get some head shakes or yes or no's on whether or not that's true or not. But outside of that, that's a very low level that, Andy, you went to have this guy come on here and do that. And if Alfonso believes that this is all political and people are just attacking you, he named some things he thought you did well, well, how about the things you did terrible? Triple J, Joan Jackson Johnson is still trying to free herself of the, the imploding BS that you brought on her. I'm currently fighting nonstop with Smurka as well as yourself, trying to get my benefits taken care of while you guys are constantly sending me to your doctors to tell you what my doctors have already told you. You know, this, this list goes on and on and on of the negative things that you've done, and no, no positive whatsoever's come out of your office. I mean, we're in debt up to our eyeballs. That's your fault. We've lost millions of dollars. You brought in positions that have come in and gone to go be with family. We know to leaving destruction, and I actually witnessed your last financial advisor expressed that exactly, exact thing right in front of me and Brandon Betts, told that, said that she left that dumpster fire before it hit the fan. That's who you hired to come in here and fix the issues? It's just constant propaganda. Dude, when are you, when are you gonna step aside and let the city live? I mean, this is so low that you bring this guy on here to do that. And I like, again, it's, it's beyond me. Um, the aspect of, you know, the propaganda continues to go on, man. When are you gonna address the, the audio tape of you coming out stating that you know there's racism within the fire department, and you believe the stories of Dave Oldham and myself? When are you gonna come out publicly and state those things? Instead of taking pictures with minorities all day, look at us while, while we're talking. When are you gonna do that, Mayor? I'd love to hear that.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
All right. With that, let me just triple check. We have no further business for the Lansing City Council at 8:37. We are adjourned.